Good evening, everyone. We want to welcome you to our South Weaver City Council. Today is October the 11th, 2022, and it's 6:00 PM. Before we begin with our pledge and our prayer, we've got one special occasion that we would like to take care of first. Today is someone has a, someone very special has a birthday. That's what I was trying to say. Lisa, today is Lisa's birthday. Dave says he would like for everybody to sing happy birthday to her. And then I think they've got a cake right there that they want to take care of. So do you want to stand up and lead us? Okay, here we go.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you.
Yeah, if there's anything that you don't want to do on your birthday, it's in city council. So, thank you, Lisa. We appreciate you. We'll begin with a pledge conducted by Councilwoman Albert, and then we'll have a prayer by the Councilwoman Robertson.
Please sound for the pledge allegiance. Can I speak after me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our dear Father, we come before you this evening. We're so very grateful for the opportunity to gather here together as members of our community and as council members, and we ask that you may have thy spirit with us, that we may make wise decisions on our city's behalf, and that we may keep in mind how these decisions affect the members of our community. Father, we're thankful for our firefighters and our police and our armed forces, and we ask you to watch over and protect them, that all may be well, that they may return to their homes in safety and to their loved ones. Again, we're thankful for the country which we live in and for the freedoms which we have, and we say things in thy name, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. We'll begin tonight with public comments. If you've got some comments, we'd ask you to step up to the microphone. I will give you three minutes for your remarks, state your name and your address, and council will not respond to your remarks. So we'll begin with public comments.
Paul Stern, 2527 Deer Run Drive. My public comments tonight are regarding action item number six, reference packet page eight of 78, on the presentation which we haven't heard yet, development proposal by Joseph Cook. My public comments are, why was a copy of the development proposal not included in the packet? Number two, a copy of Mr. Cook's presentation should be provided to South Weaver City and Michelle for inclusion in this meeting minutes. Now, this is a note, as a reminder, the lost development agreement was signed by Joseph Cook and Laurie Gale on the 8th of June 21. Kim also notarized this development agreement on that date of 8 June 21. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Anyone else? Okay, next item. It became necessary for us to replace a couple of employees. We've had two part-time positions that opened up. One was for a new customer service utility billing specialist, and the other one for the community service department. And we've filled both of those positions, and we'd like to introduce our two newest employees to you at this time. So Heather Arnell is going to be our new customer service stand-up, and Dominic Kippinger. And we want to welcome you both here. We're excited to have you employed by South Weaver City and hope that all goes well for you as well. Thank you so much for accepting those jobs, and if anyone has anything they'd like to ask these guys?
I told them, I've been thinking. Do you guys want to come up? And will you tell us where you're, where you're going to be working at in the city? And maybe a little bit about yourself, and then I do have a question for you.
My name's Dominic, and I'm working in the community services department under Trevor. I'm an office assistant, so whatever Trevor tells me to do, I just kind of do.
Okay, so Dominic, if you had to listen to one genre of music for the rest of your life, and another genre of music you will never hear again for the rest of your life, what would they be?
I applied to uncrossed to listen to for the rest of my life, and then probably rap. I just don't care for rap very much.
He made it safe.
Modern or classic.
Thanks, Dominic. Welcome.
You passed.
Okay, so Heather, you wanted to tell us a little bit about yourself, then where you're at in the city?
Yeah, I am Heather Arnell. I'm actually a resident of South Weaver. Surprisingly, most of the people that work here don't actually live here. I forgot why, but I, I was hired to be a receptionist, the front desk, the face of South Weaver. Dave so kindly called me the Miss Frizzle of City Hall, so. But yeah, I'm kind of a cat role too. I work at the front, so whatever they tell me to do, I listen to Mac and Marin and even Kelly. So, but I am in charge of utility billing, so that is my main thing.
I like Miss Frizzle a lot.
Thank you.
Okay. If life, okay, wait, sorry, let's try again. If in our lives, we were able to change into an animal at any point in time, and we could stay that animal as long as we wanted to, but the longer we were that animal, the less human-like we became. I'm going somewhere, but. But you could only turn into that animal always, like you have to pick an animal, and that's what you got to turn into. What would it be?
Dragon. I can fly. I have power over fire. As long as I have kind of a human mind, I could go after all the people I have grudges with, and by the time I lose my mind, I'm just a dragon anyways, and no one can really get to me.
You guys see why I asked these questions? It taught me a lot.
That list of people may grow.
You may have to be moved into different places possibly. Good to meet you, Heather. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, you guys. Our next item, Davis County Animal Care is here. Ashley Young would like to speak to us for a minute, so we'll turn some time to her.
Thank you so much for having me today, Council Mayor. Really appreciate a little bit of your time today to discuss our pet limits in Davis County. Animal care of Davis County has brought to all of our city leaders in Davis County some changes to our ordinances for animal care of Davis County. We have had some requests from quite a few residents here lately to increase our animal limit. South Weaver has already adopted quite a while ago the Davis County Animal Limit, which are three dogs per household. We are offering an additional dog permit that we wanted to bring before the council and the mayor for your consideration. So with this additional dog permit, it would be for our great pet owners. So the animals in the home have to be spayed and neutered. They can't have any incidents of violation with us. In the past year, the animals can be microchipped, so really our responsible pet owners, we're looking to allow them to have up to four dogs. They went through this permit process and were accepted. We're also changing some of the language of our ordinance to get it in line with a code, a state code that was passed last year with some ADA requirements that service animals cannot count towards that pet limit. This does not qualify for our emotional support pets. It has to be a service pet that has been trained by a professional for things like diabetic alert, mobility, hearing or seeing dogs, which are pretty rare in our community. So I just wanted to open that up if you had any thoughts on that, and then we're just looking to do some updates for our communities.
Excuse me. So I was just reading 6.12.060, and in there it talks about a maximum of three cats and dogs. Now you're only talking dogs.
So it would be total.
Okay.
But typically it's dogs, the dog people that are coming to us begging for an X-ray.
So it'll still be four max regardless, but mainly it's dogs.
Yeah.
Somebody wants four cats?
Owners, yes, the cats would need to be licensed and spayed and neutered and microchipped.
Do you have defined pets, just as cats or dogs?
We do for licensing purposes. We do have a very broad definition of what an animal is in our county code, but we only require dogs and cats to be licensed at this point.
Okay, thank you.
I've actually got a problem with this, that you have a preferred or a good dog owner, spay and neutering and microchip. That's a pretty big actual cost.
It is.
And so now you're basically eliminating from lower income the ability to be able to do this. That kind of seems like a wrong kind of decision to make of just arbitrarily punishing people that just can't afford it. So why? There's no exceptions or no nothing. It's just, you don't make it up, so you don't do it.
So there are low-cost options for those services, and we're actually beginning at animal care to expand our services to offer those services. You can get a microchip up at our facility for $25, which is like a third of the cost that you would pay at a vet clinic. And we're starting to look at offering limited spay-neuter services for people who can't afford care. There's also Heart Song, which is a local vet clinic that does very low-cost services. And then Best Friends is actually coming into our community and assisting as well because we do see deficit. We are, yeah, but it works. Yeah, yeah. We are requiring that microchip because we really want these pets to be able to get back home. We need to know who owns them. And when you start talking about multi-dog households, it's pretty important that the pets are spayed or neutered, so we are not coming into litters if you have multiple genders of animals, which we do see quite often. So it's not so much that we're trying to put barriers on individuals that might not have the funds, but we really want these people to be doing the right things for their pets, which we see as microchipping and spaying or.
I agree with what Ross is saying, that they've got a requirement to be able to have some.
Yeah.
Kind of hard to look at, and I appreciate what you.
Thank you. I appreciate what you're doing on this, you know, doing some of the low-cost options. Is there any way that those low-cost options could be in place before you start doing the limiting? Or it's not limiting, it's allowing?
Yeah, yeah. So a lot of these options are already in place. It's more of our community knowing about them. So we are starting to do more promotion on the resources we have available in our partnership. And Heart Song is up and going. It can take a little bit of time to get in there because there is such a high demand, but that is currently available to members of the community.
And is there anything about not being a preferred dog owner if you had violations?
There is, yeah. So if you have had a violation with us in the past year, then you would not be a candidate. So that is any of our nuisance violations, barking, excess waste, running out large, anything along those lines. You wouldn't be a candidate for the program. Your application would get denied.
Not to get the fourth pet or to?
The fourth, yeah. So they would still be fine to have the three, but the fourth.
Last one, I also happen to have a couple of friends that have, well, ex-police dogs and ex-veteran dogs and stuff. Those aren't considered a service animal, but I think they've done a pretty good service. Do you think that we can make an exception for those?
They are currently an exception in our current code, and they would remain that way. Any government agency-type dog or retiree is exempt.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Actually, I have a.
Go ahead.
Okay, I just have a couple of questions for you. So my first question, you said that this came, did this code change come, originated from Davis County? Was it your agency that said, can we do this?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we met originally September 1st with all the city managers, and I was asked by the city managers to present two options because we do have some cities currently that only allow two pets currently, and that's the line. And so we're trying to navigate all of that.
Okay, so how receptive have other cities been of this change?
Fairly receptive. I would say the one that we kind of are having the most conversations regarding this is Leyton City, and they've had several big dog incidents happen in the last few years. It's totally understandable. But a lot of the cities are already working towards improvising or implementing this change.
Okay, so I totally appreciate, I appreciate you guys because I know that it's kind of a thankless job, honestly, and I do appreciate that. My issue with this is that it is, I almost feel, I know you guys are enforcement for animal control, but I almost feel like it's a little bit out of line, that the cities should be writing their code. And so I might, that's my only issue, is having a county saying, hey, all you cities, I really want you to do this code. Where I feel like the cities really should maintain that control. So that's my only, my only issue with that. I feel like the, what is written in here is not necessarily inappropriate, but I do hesitate because I don't want any precedent set. Is that understandable?
Yeah, so currently in South Weaver's code, it references our code. It says that, you know, animal care of Davis County handles all animal control and references over to our code. So this would just be a change in there, and you know, historically, we have made these changes without consulting with the cities, and we don't want to be those people anymore. We really want to have that strong partnership, and so that's why I'm here today because we are considering this change, and we want to make sure that everybody is in support of it and feels like it's appropriate for our residents to have up to four dogs through this permit process. I understand what you're saying, and you know, our kennel licenses, currently we work in coordination, or it's an additional use permit, I believe here. So we could do something along those lines if that's kind of what the cities are feeling, but a lot of them are comfortable with us kind of managing the animal numbers because we are the ones that are having to enforce it.
Right, and I totally understand that. I just, that's my only hesitation is, is the precedence, and if it's happened in the past, that we're already seeing precedent set a little bit, and so I have, I just want to make sure that we have local control as possible. So that's, those are my only comments on this.
Yeah.
But thank you so much for bringing, for coming out and giving your presentation to us.
So I just have a couple of clarifying questions. So the additional dog requires a microchip and neutering. Does that mean all four have to have that?
Yeah, so if you want to qualify for that fourth, they all have to be altered.
And if you have three and you're not looking for the additional, you don't have to have them all neutered?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, and the other question is, some dogs are big, some are small, some people have very small property. You know, it states in here a depiction of the outside area showing all fencing kennels, dog runs, which are capable of confining up to four dogs. Is there a more detailed explanation as to how large of an area you need to have in order to have, say, four Great Danes versus four Chihuahuas?
That's something that we go back to your planning departments on or your zoning to check in with them and see if that's something that they were comfortable with there. But our officer team isn't necessarily skilled in knowing how much space is appropriate for each individual city because it varies. But something we would turn back to your team and consult some less.
Okay, thank you.
We don't currently have anything in our zoning regarding the size of an animal, do we?
I don't believe so.
May I ask a follow-up question to what you brought up, Angie? How many cities in the county reference the Davis County Animal Code like we do?
Oh, I don't know the exact number. I did send you a spreadsheet that kind of outlined all that back in September, but I would say it's over half that reference our code directly, and we kind of redirect you to our site.
Yeah, yeah, I just wanted to make that a, make that public information, that it's roughly half, just over half of the cities do exactly what we do and say whatever that animal code is from the county is what our code is. So from a local control perspective.
Yeah, and we do appreciate that. One of the reasons that we're looking for this change is because many of our cities have very different ordinances, and it's hard on our citizens when they're moving from city to city, which they often do. And also our animal control officers for enforcement, they're having to reference county code and city code and go back and forth depending on where they're located at. So this would streamline operations for me, but also make it a little bit easier for our residents as well, especially with the cities that do have lower dog limits. It can be pretty tricky, and then that individual is having to rehome their pet because of a move that they made, knowing that the city had a different animal limit, which is a very, very hard thing.
Are there a lot of people coming in for a fourth application, for our fourth pet, I mean?
So we currently do not offer a fourth pet. That's not allowed. At that point, we would be advising the individual that they need to rehome an animal, but we have a very, very high demand of people coming in, being more upset or asking how they can change the animal limit. So this is kind of our first step of gently allowing those people who are doing all the right things, having that extra dog.
Okay, so Ashley, what would you like for my, any?
Well, it sounds like there needs to be a little bit more conversation.
Have a little more conversation before we give her an okay, or how do you guys feel?
I, I'm okay with the, I can see why the need needs to be there for the, as far as enforcement, because it would be more difficult for Davis County, for the animal control officers.
Can I ask a clarifying question perhaps? I don't know who to. Maybe Jamie, I'm not sure. If we have in our code to reference Davis County Animal Control for animal services or animal licensing, sorry, at any point in time, we could change it to South Weaver and gain that local control, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so if at any point in time we feel that we need to put local city changes onto this, we could. Okay.
And like I said, I don't feel like anything in here is inappropriate by any means. Just want to make sure I understood that.
I'm good with it.
So we need to discuss schedule A or B? Or we're not voting on this, I guess, just a presentation.
Well, one was to keep just three, as you currently have. Here's recommend expanded to four, correct?
Yeah, yeah, so it would be schedule A, which you already allow the three dogs according to our county code. So this really would just be allowing that additional dog permit, getting that going, and then the ADA accommodations that service animals cannot count towards that pet limit.
Okay, so we agree on.
We agree, but we can't, we can't, we can't make a motion on it. It wasn't, it was just a presentation.
I don't believe there's any action.
No, I'm not looking for any action. She just kind of wants to know.
Yeah, it just sounded like they could have done this without letting us know, and they're just informing us, correct?
Yeah.
We appreciate you informing us. That was very good.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Okay, our next item is a development proposal by Joseph Cook. Mr. Cook, if you're here, we'll invite you up to the microphone for your presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for city council being here. Appreciate your time. We've been, you know, gotten to know each other over the last couple of years. I kind of wanted to give you a brief update. I don't know if you can see this on your computer screens, but on the current status of the Deer Run project, saw the flyer with the clock over the, this project, so I saw that. So where we're at today, we've, this is a, this is a site plan. It's not the recorded plat, but right now we've got 64 units and three buildings, a bunch of parking, and we can go to the next slide. We've got, I'll just kind of show you what we've got in the ground. We've got water vaults and the meters installed, the hydrants installed, all the tie-ins, I think, other than stormwater is complete. The sewer tie-in is complete. The secondary water on the north side of the canal is done, and the water loop and blow-off are completed to make that possible. Still remaining, we have the secondary water on the south end of the property because the property is in two different water districts. And the canal crossing, which we should be, if you've driven by, you've seen a bunch of manholes that were recently delivered, and the stormwater on the north end of the canal to be, to complete. So that would be the, pretty much what we have left in the public right of way. So if any of you have questions, that's kind of where we're at right now. But we, we, after speaking to Jeff, Jeff Klaus, he lives at 2130, is that right? And 7800 South in South Weaver, he's, he's our general contractor. After having some consultations with him, he recommended and said, hey, you know, honestly, let's, let's go back and see if we can make this project a little bit more, you know, conforming to kind of South Weaver's feel. And so that's kind of why we're here tonight and, and why we're standing in front of you today. And, and so we kind of put our heads together and said, okay, what did we hear over the last, you know, year or two that we've been discussing this project? And we made a list on the next slide of kind of things that we think South Weaver would prefer, and we've got single-family residences, low. we think South Weaver would prefer. And we've got single-family residences, lower density, less traffic down seventy-eight hundred, uh, no commercial, lower roof lines, uh, lower and fewer retaining walls and more parking, uh, per unit. And so these were a lot of the issues that were brought up during our, uh, approval process on the, um, various iterations of the plan that we, uh, had previously brought. And so I think, um, in consultation with, uh, Jeff and, and, um, uh, in, in over the last little while, we, we, we put our heads together and, and said, well, how can we address each one of these? And, and so if you go to the next slide, really, we're just addressing, I think we can address every single one of these through a single-family attached pro- uh, product, which would be townhomes. And so, so the next, the next slide is kind of, we did, uh, I think it's fifty-eight hu- hu- townhomes in North Salt Lake. Um, that look, these are actual photos. Um, we've got, uh, these, the ones on the, on the, on your left-hand side are a three-story rear entry, rear garage and front entry. Uh, there are three bedrooms, um, and they've got, uh, it's about what, living space, about twenty-one hundred square feet or? On living space? No, nineteen, nineteen, yeah, those are different ones. Nineteen-twenty living space in this one, plus a two-car garage. And, um, oh, they're both, they're both, they're both a three-story. Then, then we've got, on the next slide, we've got, um, these are a different unit. These are four-bedroom units with a two-car garage and, uh, five with a basement, right? So four upstairs and then if, uh, I think we would have a unfinished basement to start. And if someone wanted to, you know, pay to, uh, build out their basement, they could have a, a fifth bedroom in the basement. But these are two-car garages and, um, uh, have, the, these particular ones have a, uh, a full driveway, um, in front of them. So really, they have four parking stalls on these units, um. And, uh, so the, so let me just go, let's go to the next, the next slide. This would, would kinda give you a feel for how we would achieve that lower density. Uh, we have a loop in and a loop out and then two driveways where, where it says, uh, phase one and phase two. Um, so we've got those three-story units up, up front along the road, facing the road, where the, 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 um, where the, kind of the, the, uh, more attractive side is facing the road and the, the garages face the, the rear so that, so that you're not seeing any garages from, uh, seventy-eight hundred south or seventy-eight hundred.
Um, sorry, can you?
Yes, ma'am.
You're seeing the rear of the homes?
No, 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 you're from the road.
You're seeing the front of the home?
Exactly. And really, you probably only see the top two stories because the, the property's gonna start stepping down, cause it's a forty-foot drop um, from the, the road to the rear of the property. And so, um, so we've got, we've gone from, this would bring us from sixty-four units, as it says there, down to less than fifty. I think right now this, this drawing here has forty-five, forty-three. So, sorry, I didn't, uh, I didn't like to introduce, uh, we got Leland Martino, here's our civil engineer, uh, Henry, Henry DiRona, uh, with the development team and Jeff Klaus with the, uh, general contractor. So anyway, um, we've got, uh, lower density, we can go to the next slide if you don't mind. Um, plus, uh, no commercial equals, I think, uh, pretty obvious, um, uh, there's gonna be a lot less traffic under this particular plan. You won't have people coming in the morning and leaving in the evening, that sort of thing. Um, the next ish, the next thing we, we kind of, you would get out of this plan is, uh, lower roof lines. On the building we originally had, it's a twelve-foot roof from top plate to, uh, I guess the, what do you call it? The peak of the roof, the gable, whatever. Um, on these townhome plans, it's about a six-foot roof. So you, you, not only would you, uh, gain the, the roof not being so tall, but these would also be set further into the ground, I think, up against seventy-eight hundred as well. So you would, um, benefit there on the, uh, on the, the height. Um, next slide, please. Um, we've also, we have perimeter retaining walls on this particular plan. The final iteration that we had approved and we recorded the plat, we, we had various heights and they were much reduced from the original drawing. But nevertheless, we still had, uh, and so, and Leland could talk, speak to this if you have any questions, but we had a series of retaining walls all the way around, which was, uh, a concern and, and a matter of discussion in, uh, previous, uh, meetings with, with city council. And, um, I think un- under, under this plan, if you go to the next, uh, slide, please, we eliminate all, all, uh, perimeter retaining walls to the view of neighbors. And so the only ones we would have would be those ones separating where we have a, a, a step in the property going down the hill, uh, located in green there, as well as retaining that, uh, those parking stalls in phase one. And so you've got a drastic, um, I, I think, uh, aesthetically better for the city on that point as well.
So Joseph, on, on the retaining walls, is that, um, is that something you would be changing only for aesthetics? For the perimeter retaining? I mean, this is very significantly less retaining walls.
Right.
So it's obviously less expensive.
Correct.
But simply for aesthetics and cost, is that the reason?
Yeah, both, both. I think it's, uh, a win-win zone.
Okay, thank you.
It's my good friend. Um, this plan gives us more flexibility for changes in elevation.
Do you mind just coming to the mic? Sorry.
This plan gives us more flexibility for changes in elevation and allows us to put the building floors closer to the, to the grade that it needs to be. And so we find that all the way along the perimeter, our base to four is roughly the natural grade. It just eliminates the need for those perimeter walls.
You know, on the, uh, four-bedroom units, the garage actually comes in on this, on o- over the basement, whereas on the three-bedroom units, they are, they come out on the bottom floor in the basement. So you, you can actually use the, the, the foundation walls to make up for the, the change in grade. So it's, it's helpful that way.
Okay, thank you.
Um, all right, so next, let's go to the next slide. So the, um, uh, with regards to parking this, our previous plan, I think we had two-point-five-six, uh, stalls per unit. Some were, some were covered and some were exposed um, on the multifamily plan. And that's, and that's, that was, I think, quite a bit more than was required per code. However, this, um, this townhome idea significantly increases that, that number of parking stalls. We've got, uh, three-point-one-four stalls per unit. Every single unit has a two-car garage that families can, can drive into and, uh, be safe, whether they're coming home late at night, early in the morning or whatever, and close the garage door behind them. Um, and, uh, many of these units along the back perimeter would have their own private driveway. Um, if you go to the next slide, uh, please, you'll see, um, talking, looking at the dri- the parking, all the units along the back arc of the, of the property have a full driveway. And they, um, so they, they would actually pull in on the second floor and on that same floor, there would be a, a little, uh, room, a TV room, whatever you wanted to, it to be. And then, um, upstairs would be the bedroom. Um, oh, no, actually, on that, on that floor, there's actually the kitchen and living room, sorry. It's a much larger, very large unit. It's a twenty-five-hundred square foot home. So on that same level as the garage, there's a, uh, kitchen and living room. And then you go upstairs and there's four bedrooms and there's an unfinished basement in the basement. Um, so this is, uh, kind of, I think, I think this, uh, talking to Jeff and, uh, bouncing ideas off him, I think this is something that's probably more, um, not being from, from South Weaver, but I think it's more in harmony with the, the spirit and feel of what South Weaver wants and allows for the next generation of South Weaver citizens to, uh, potentially purchase one of these or, or whatever and, and stay here long-term. And you can, you can, you know, some people may not necessarily wanna buy a townhome, but you can literally live in a townhome, long-term, a four-bedroom townhome with a uh, unfinished basement and two-car garage, um, long-term with, with the way that, uh, you know, the traditional single-family homes are, are exploding in price. This, I think, um, gives, gives the future residents of South Weaver a chance to, to either stay in that home long-term, if they, if, if the market continues to appreciate or to, um, uh, use it as a step up. So last, last slide here is, is what is needed, I guess. That's really the, the biggest question is, is can we make this, um, a reality? And what we put here has listed a few things that, that, uh, Leland's given us that we would like to consider, um, in order to make this reality. And, and, and these include, uh, ten-foot, uh, setbacks between, uh, front setbacks and between buildings. Um, we've got a thirty-two-foot right-of-way from top back of curb to top back of curb.
Joseph, do you mind just telling us what currently is, so you, yeah, what you're requesting is ten-foot front and rear?
And this zone, we, the, the front setback off seventy-eight hundred is, is currently ten feet.
Okay.
So, um, right now, there, it's not an issue. I'm not sure a lot, long-term on, in the commercial overlay. Uh, but I don't think we have a, a conflict with setbacks in the cur- in the current drawings, the current plats. Um, right now, I, I believe, and you correct, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe the, the height restriction is fifty feet? Or is it something like that in, in the commercial overlay?
Fifty.
And, um, excuse me, um, we, uh, we, according to our, our acreage, uh, which is like two-point-eight something, we, at twenty-five an acre, I think we were allowed seventy-two, something like that total originally. Um, but, so we would be down below fifty with this. And right now, we're showing forty-three, so. And the, the biggest thing I think also is, is expedited approval. If, if, if we could, um, make something like this a reality and do it, you know, expeditiously, that would be, you know, that'd be great. We've got, uh, um, our, most of our utility's done and most of them will be done, uh, here in the next few months. Now that the, uh, the canal is closed, so. But that, those are the really the big things. I think that the biggest thing I think was probably the, with the road, Leland, the road width.
Yeah.
There you.
What the council says is that for, for private roads, they get to meet city standards. It, it, that's all it says. But, you know, we've got examples of, say, for example, uh, is it Freedom? Freedom Landing, they've got a twenty-eight-foot road. And, and so what we're thinking is, okay, well, then that, that road width is not necessarily set in stone, but certainly the cross-section would be if, if I'm reading that right. And so, um, what we're requesting is a thirty-two, two-foot right-of-way, TBC to TBC. Um, in order to make this work.
I'm sorry, can you tell me what you mean, TBC?
Top back of our, uh, true.
Thank you.
Yep. So that would be there's some roll curbs either side and twenty-eight feet of asphalt. Which is fairly large.
What's a fire, fire, what do you mean for a fire truck?
The fire truck needs, uh, needs a twenty-foot access, but they like to have twenty-six feet except for pinch points.
Let me, so do you mind going back to the setup, um, the slide that shows the, the schematic? Thank you.
Just to help clarify on the, the design standards, there's a cross-section for our private right-of-way standards. And so, um, for our townhome sections, we're looking at a fifty-foot, uh, TBC, so.
I mean, that's recently updated, so.
That includes sidewalks?
No, that's, that's sidewalk. It's a sidewalk, yeah.
If you were to add sidewalks in it, five-foot park strip and five-foot sidewalk to either side of this, this would be fifty-two feet. So it's actually a little more asphalt, but, uh, we would want to dispense with the sidewalks, given that it's a private road.
So let me just clarify, for, for tonight, your hope is that you're getting some direction from the council as to feasibility of this change, correct? Okay.
Would it help the council to have an overview of what would be required legally to make the kinds of changes they're proposing? I, so, uh, as a starting point, all this is today is a proposal and the only action you can take is discussing the item, not
Right.
formal action on it. If it is something that you might want to consider, then it would have to be noticed and heard by the planning commission and then come to you for action at a later point in time.
Right.
This particular project, this particular property is subject to a development agreement. The development agreement runs with the land. The development agreement in this circumstance is what I would characterize as a site-specific zoning document. And so rather than apply one of the existing city zoning ordinances to the property, the development agreement functions essentially as that zoning ordinance and then borrows from provisions of the other zoning ordinance. And so if you were to change it, uh, the densities they're proposing with the townhome development are a little bit more dense, Trevor tells me, than what would be permitted under, say, in our seven zone. And so I think what you would be contemplating, if you wanted to take this up, was another site-specific zoning ordinance accomplished through the Second Amendment to the development agreement that would then define specific to this project, what the, what the characterizations that you think would be acceptable are. I hope that makes sense. That was a lot.
That, that does make sense. Thank you. Appreciate that, Jim.
Um, I've just got a bunch of questions for you.
Please.
Um, I wasn't involved in the, uh, first time you guys came through, so some of these questions may be a little naive. Um, you said no commercial. There was a daycare there?
We, we have a letter of intent from a daycare that would, that may, uh, want to occupy the, the potential, uh, um, commercial space.
What was the rest of the commercial? Or was that the only commercial in this project?
Well, we, originally on our first iteration of our project, we had, I think, twenty-seven thousand square feet of commercial, which was quite a lot. So right now, at our current iteration, we've got about forty-five hundred square feet, something like that.
So it would still have commercial in it?
Not, not, not on the revision. No, sir.
Okay, so on this one, there would be no commercial, just the houses?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I saw the, the setback. So you're saying that along that front, uh, along the road itself, um, you're still gonna maintain a ten-foot setback?
We don't need to. A, a current drawing, the drawing of the proposal has actually had a twenty-foot setback right now.
That's what I thought I was seeing on there, so that it could have.
The commercial, the, 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 the iteration that, that has the, uh, the commercial and the, the multifamily actually is a ten-foot setback right now. So, we don't, but we don't need it on this drawing that Leland's done. I think it's twenty feet.
Yeah.
So.
Um, and you're saying this is going to be a private road, so obviously there would be an HOA and all of these kinda things.
Right, it wouldn't be city-maintained, correct?
Parking is based on that. Uh, you, you've broken it out into four phases.
Yeah.
Why so many?
Mostly financing, that's the biggest thing. Um, you know, putting together financing for, uh, uh, we, I think each one of these is probably gonna top north of, between two-hundred-fifty and three-hundred thousand dollars to build. So I would, I would think, you know, just, just financing purposes, that's really the biggest one. So building, building, you know, twenty-five of them at a time, you just multiply it times that plus the utility work that has to be done. It's, it, the number gets pretty big pretty fast, so.
Okay. And are you looking at have those phases put into the development agreement?
Sure.
Yeah? Cause right now I'm seeing, uh, seeing a lot of, uh, volatility out there in the real estate debt, especially in the development issues.
Right.
Um, and, uh, the last thing I'd wanna do is have uh, one area developed and then the rest of it's not going to be, because you all no longer have the, the funding for it.
Yeah, and I, I think the phasing, the phase lines would have to operate, you know, to, uh, for, I, I think our first phase, you can, that they can fight fire all the way along seventy-eight hundred south. And then they would have that driveway behind as well. So it would be, uh, um, adequate, um, adequate, uh, improvements to, to fight fire.
Joseph, just for clarification, you're, you, you keep saying seventy-eight hundred, but you mean twenty-seven hundred east?
Excuse me.
Yeah.
So twenty-seven hundred east, excuse me.
So everybody's on the same page?
Yeah, twenty-seven hundred.
Okay, questions?
I have one more question. So you would not be putting any fencing in on the west side? It would just be, there's a fence where the canal is, correct?
It, I don't know if there is a fence.
Not one now, but I think.
Not one right now. But we, but I, we would, yeah, that's fine.
Okay, thank you.
I appreciate the comment that's trying to make it something more conducive to South Weaver. Um, that's a subjective thing. I mean, back when this first started, and again, I was on the council at that time, but there was a commercial overlay and there was the hope of, you know, a whole bunch of commercial with residential mixed in and things have changed quite a bit since then.
Right.
And, um, there'd be many that would argue that.
And, um, there'd be many that would argue that, you know, this still wouldn't fit into South Weaver. It'd probably fit better. Than it would into South Weaver, uh, from, from the prior things. I guess the other question I have is, you know, obviously there's an urgency that you're asking for. What is, you know, from your standpoint. A timely association with you needing to go through all the formal things that were just explained.
I think the, the biggest for us, um, uh, as long as we can turn our civils in and in a timely fashion and get onto the, the, um. On the, on the, excuse me? Yeah, on the review, on the schedule, um, you know, we, we. There, it's, you know, it's, it's, it's commonly known that we had a lot of resistance to, you know, previous iterations. So. You know, I, I don't know what there is going to be, uh, to, to this particular project, but, um, but that, that's really, you know. Just, just get, we'll do our part if we can get on the schedule and, and, and meet deadlines. I think, uh. We're hoping, um, for, you know, just the, uh, you know, nothing special, but just. The regular run-of-the-mill, um, review process and, and, uh, that sort of thing, so.
I think the biggest hurdle, if I may, is going to be that development agreement process. Um, that, we'd want that, um, upfront prior to running through the whole development process, just so we have. Some, some basis of what we're reviewing for the design. That's going to be the largest hurdle and it's, it's hard to put a timeframe. On that because it's, it's a negotiation at that point.
And really, I think, uh, we, if we, we can define the density, we can define the setbacks and the road widths and define those things. I mean, we could have that tomorrow for you. So that's really the, that's why we put that last page on there, just to be upfront as to what we need. And that's, that's really.
Okay, so I'm going to address that for just a moment, Joseph. So, um. The things that are being requested as a developer, the thirty-two foot right-of-way is already something in city codes. But not necessarily specific to the zone, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay. Um, the setbacks. Same thing, still in code, but not specific to this zone, correct? What were the other requests? Besides, no sidewalks?
Height of thirty-eight? Does that sound right? All the other zones are thirty-five currently.
But in this CO zone, they were allowed to go fifty.
Right.
Okay. Um, what was the last?
Location of sidewalks, we'd have to look at that.
Yeah, with the thirty-two foot cross-section, it doesn't appear that there would actually be any, any sidewalk in, interior.
So that'd be something to consider.
Okay, thank you. So this, this would, this process would be very similar to what we did, um, with the Riverside RV Park, correct? As far as the development agreement process, let me clarify that.
Yeah, in, in rough sketch format, what you would have to do is you'd publish notice. You'd hold a hearing with the planning commission. The notice would be sent to neighboring properties within the radius defined by state code. I think it's three hundred feet. Uh, you then would hold a hearing at the planning commission where you'd consider. What's proposed as the new zoning in the development agreement, and then that would come forward. To the city council, either with a recommendation or against by the planning commission, then the council could act. So I think best case scenario, you're looking at a few months-long process, just to do the notices and, and hold the meetings. You know, I think the typical course for something like this is probably a three to six-month period, assuming that there's not any objection to what's presented.
So would we still do, I guess my, my more specific question, but I appreciate that answer, um, would be, would we have. A subcommittee of sorts to help with that discussion for the development agreement before it gets to that process?
I think with development agreements, it's, it's appropriate to have the mayor assign individuals to represent on the committee to review that request. However, the mayor wants to handle that. I've seen that where there's a subcommittee with representatives from the planning commission, city council. Or I've seen it as a, uh, collective group, depending on the size and dynamic of that development agreement. Um, but typically a smaller group to workshop it, and then we can do a discussion. Not, not the approval, but we could do the discussion of what the subcommittee is. It has put forward, see if everybody is feeling comfortable that way, and then we can move it forward. So that negotiation portion, that's where that. Once we feel comfortable with what the agreement is, I think that's where that three months kind of takes, where we have the planning commission public hearing. Then the planning commission action, then the city council action the month after that.
Okay, thank you. I think that's very helpful for all of us to kind of understand the flow of the process as we consider this. Thank you.
So why no sidewalks? I don't understand why.
I don't have room.
We'll have sidewalks to the front doors and that sort of thing, but Leland can probably address, uh.
Okay, so, um. This would be considered a vehicle access type of, of development. Where it's not practical on a site where you've got more than five percent grades to have sidewalk accesses throughout. Because then you're looking at ADA ramps and, and we've got a street that runs at more than ten percent where ADA is eight percent. Um, and so that just doesn't work out without, uh, huge expenses to put in sidewalks. So there, there is a, uh, an exception in the, uh. International Building Code for your ADA access is drive into the garage, get out, and then you have just a level entry into the home.
But, but that, that exemption doesn't eliminate sidewalks. It just eliminates the ADA access. In the International Building Code.
Okay, and we do have a sidewalk along the, along the street and sidewalks up into the, into the houses that front the streets.
Can I just maybe jump to what I think Joel is really asking is why don't you just do the fifty-foot right-of-way that we have and, and include sidewalks? Rather than why are you not? Why don't you include the sidewalks?
So we have, if you could put the plan for this back up on the screen. There we go. Okay, so we have two different types of units in this development. We've got the ones up there on the, on the furnished road. And then we've got the ones on the outer loop. The ones on the outer loop are the larger units. They're the nicer ones with the, with the driveway. If we were to eliminate those driveways, we can get sidewalks in. And alternatively, if we could make all of the units, the smaller, tighter-together ones, we could also. Fit the sidewalks in. However.
So, um, hold on two seconds. So you're saying you can fit it in with this current density without losing any units? Is, is that what we're understanding?
No, we would not be, we would not be parking over the driveways. So there, there's just a finite, finite amount of distance between the, the outer loop and the back property line. And so if we add to that right-of-way width, it squishes that and then we end up with the smaller units rather than the bigger ones. Zach?
Would a narrower sidewalk help instead of a five-foot sidewalk?
I, I think you need five foot.
I know we've had this discussion before, but I, I kind of wanted to hear what he had to say.
Sorry.
That's okay.
I messed with you, said, Brandon.
I said, I, I think you need five foot, just, just. For ADA reasons for people traversing.
Well, there's no way ADA works on this site, so maybe just people traversing. But if we had a five-foot adjacent sidewalk on one side, if that would be palatable.
Well, like, I, the reason why I asked it is because, um. I think it's great that you guys are going to make, grundle a money on it. You should. It's your business.
Sure.
Yeah. Um, but at the same time, as soon as you guys leave, all of these are going to be filled up with, with South Weaver citizens. And the last thing I want to do is, um, because. We didn't want to consider changing things or, or moving things, we allowed a, a. Well, a piss-four type of development that goes in, that doesn't have all of the, the basic essentials that people are going to need. Uh, like a sidewalk and those kind of things. So I guess that's why I'm asking and trying to find out on these. Um, I, I, I'd be great, I think, if, if we can come to a win-win on that. Um, but. I, I think that there needs to be something on it because, um. And you guys can look at it. I'm just telling you, we're just having a discussion right now of some of the things. Um, that, that caused the issue. I love that the height is going to be going down. I love that the numbers are going to be going down. I think the people around that area will very much appreciate it. Um, but, um, at the same time, I think we also need a good quality development there. Um, so that it, it stays a value year after year.
And I'm trying to give you guys answers to your questions, and, and I'm at the point where things, things are changing enough that I would have to lay the whole thing out again.
Yeah.
So I'm sorry, I'm not very helpful.
No, no.
But, uh, the, the one thing that would help me is just to know whether we're looking at. A detached sidewalk with a park strip or an adjacent sidewalk right next to the curb?
Don't we specify that?
Yeah, in, in the cross-sections, we have three different cross-sections. The only one that's allowed, like in an R seven. Did you want to say something?
Yes, uh, before we get too far, uh, in our, our seven code, so typically when we're looking at development, like Damien was saying, development agreement. We look at kind of the base zoning that we could go and then make concessions on that base zoning, right? We use the R seven as a template. There's provision in the R seven on the private, private rights of way. The sidewalk or pedestrian path must be made available on the front facade of residence. And connect to a public pride of, right-of-way without having to cross a road. So therefore, if, if it's a rear-loading alley. Type of, uh, option, then that's fine. We just have to make sure on the front facade of the building where the front door is. That there's connection to a, a pedestrian right-of-way. So that's an example of, of a potential way to, to handle that.
Perfect.
In, just to go back to this, the answer though, the in, um, the. The code that we updated, there's three sections. Um, the only section that was allowed in like R seven, and we're not talking specifically about R seven, because that's not the zone. Um, so this, this would be on a case-by-case basis, but just to give you the, the example, R seven only allows for the, the. Section A, which is the fifty-foot. But there are two others, um, and they. Uh, section B is, uh. Thirty-two feet, and that's just top back a curve, top back a curve. And, and then it has the option for sidewalks that are adjacent to the curb there. So what they're proposing. Uh, potentially could fit section B, um, and in some cases, maybe have sidewalk on one side or the other to give access. Um, the final section is really more intended just for an ag, application, but that's a twenty-two foot, and it's just, it's just pavement. So there is a section in here that somewhat aligns, as long as there is some sidewalk consideration in there, if that answers your question.
How wide is that sidewalk?
Five foot.
Uh, no, it's six foot.
Oh, that's right, it is.
Yeah, because it's adjacent to the curb.
Do we have to go both sides or?
I, I, I think, I mean, that seems like if, if the, the subcommittee is, is something that the mayor likes, the idea of. The details of that, I think, would be better discussed. In that group, then.
Yeah, I don't think we need to here, iron out all the details of the development here. The question to the council is. Are you willing to step away from what's been approved and work on something else with this group?
I think the council is trying to understand your flexibility and, and the.
Yeah, I think if we can make it work engineering-wise, I think that'd be.
I mean, I guess, I guess for me. And I was involved with it. And one of the previous council members made a similar suggestion to this to try to help reduce your density back then.
Yeah.
And, and, and we were fought tooth and nail by you guys on that. And so now we're going to give up the rest of the commercial, which I'm a big advocate for, and we're still at eighteen units per acre, basically. Up to fifty. Well, what'd that be? Seventeen point eight five, sorry. So, uh, that. I'm, I'm still trying to get my head wrapped around that. The highest density that we've had the city and the citizens agree to is R seven. And so we're going to give up the commercial, which the city benefits from, whether it be not from cell tax, it can be a service, just like the daycare or any other amenities. And we're still going to be at eighteen units per acre. I truly. The, the aha light bulb of what this thing's costing has obviously gone off somewhere over there.
Right.
This isn't all just, hey, let's make something better for South Weaver.
No, there's, I think there's a win-win for sure, without, without question.
And so, I, I mean, I'm just, I'm really struggling to just say, yeah, let's expedite, shove it through. And, uh, and just say, yeah, we'll accept it, cause.
No, I don't think we need to shove it through, so.
But. Well, you're asking for it to be expedited. You've had a lot of time with it, and you fought us for a lot of time with it, me specifically. So.
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, honestly, yeah, admittedly, yeah, there's been bo, both directions, so definitely, so.
Can I just say that, uh, this plan proposes fifteen point one.
Yeah, you're in the, in your request, you ask for up to fifty units per acre, or up to fifty units total.
Right. And, and because the, the drawing's not final.
I, I totally get that. I'd rather it be less than more.
That's fine.
So that's why I don't even know where you start. If, if we're all, if I'm not in agreement, someone else's agreement with eighteen, I mean, where do we go? I mean, we, because we can't give you an official answer to that. Tonight.
Right, we, we, we can be under, under a certain number or something like that, so that's.
And so, I, I mean, I guess that's the opinion. I mean, is everybody okay with going to eighteen units per acre?
So you're saying there's no option that has commercial in it? A section of those homes that was on the map, say, up in the left-hand corner. That would still be listed as commercial that you could get a viable customer for?
I think we could if we, I mean, I, I, that's not something that doesn't have to be there. I mean, that was just a proposal. So if we need to take. For instance, one of these five plexes and, and, uh, and make a commercial, you know, separate commercial space, that's something I think is, is. I don't know, maybe that's something.
It changes a lot, there's no question.
Yeah, but you see how that's a win for us? And that's the part is that we, we're, we're losing all of the commercial. And like you said, there was, you know, quite a bit of twenty-seven thousand.
Yeah.
Um, down to zero. That's, that's.
Well, maybe we can revisit that and see if we can keep that forty-five hundred square feet.
Yeah.
Um. I don't know, it's something that.
I guess to Blair's point, though, I disagree with the commercial being there.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, that's why I say it's going to be a, I mean, one more, this is brand new to all of us. We were giving.
No, I, I understand. We're not trying to, so trying to get your head wrapped around it and say.
Where you're going, are you willing to live with eighteen and no commercial whatsoever? I don't, I'm not, I'm a proponent for commercial for. The city. I don't know if townhouses and a commercial little building there makes any sense whatsoever.
Or if this is a.
You know, or whatever. Um, the other option is, I mean, you also, you're the owner of the property. You can come back, just ask for a different rezone. To go to something different away from commercial overlay.
Right. I mean, right now, we have, we're, we're putting in the utilities to build it what we currently have approved. So, I mean. That's kind of where we're at right now, but, um. But, yeah, we, that, this is, this is a proposal, and, and if we can, you know, work it out and, uh. Make the necessary concessions that the city might have, you know, we, we'd be open to it, so.
I've been trying to give you some feedback that would be helpful, and maybe, maybe. Maybe it would be helpful if we, if you know what is like a deal breaker or what is not acceptable.
Sure.
You know, Blair brought up the density.
Sure.
Um. So this obviously does not fit into our highest, or our highest density zone. It's about double what that is.
Okay.
Um. I have an issue keeping this a commercial overlay zone if there is no commercial in it. I don't like to have it be a CO zone with a development agreement saying that it's just a residential zone only. Would you be willing to come in and rezone it to a residential zoning with a development agreement for possible bonus density?
Yeah, I think that would be, uh. I think that's fine. Um.
Well, you got a hearing either way.
Yeah. So, so we get bonus density, uh.
I'm just, and I, I'm speaking just for me, but for me, I have a hard time keeping that a CO zone. I'm just, and I, I'm speaking just for me, but for me, I have a hard time keeping that a CO zone. And making it residential only unless you're going to make it a residential zone and we work out something in a development agreement that there's bonus density. And I don't know if anybody's even on board with that, but that may be a deal breaker for me. If you keep that CO and want this residential, that may be a deal.
No, I mean, I don't, I don't think there's any magic about the CO zone that, that for me, other than. Producing a product that makes, that makes financial sense and that sort of thing. So I, the zoning itself is.
Okay.
Not necessarily. I mean, I, I don't think we. Yeah, with the, with the, like you're saying, the bonus.
Bonus density.
So yeah, the CO zone is not anything, there's nothing sacred about that particular.
Okay. And then just to drive the point, because you want to be expedited, let's not do the car salesman where we, we're passing papers back and forth. What is your bottom line on density? Is it, is it fifty?
No, I think, I think forty-three makes.
Is forty-three your bottom line? Because at forty-three, you're still at the fifteen point two that we said?
I mean, that's something I can't do with numbers right now in my head, but. I mean, yeah.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
I don't, I don't have that number honestly right now.
Okay. So just to give you my feedback, and again, I'm only one of five. Um, if you are open to changing that zone. And you're opening to lowering below fifteen, I understand that you want bonus density. I understand that. Um, but you still are over double what our highest zone is. I'm having a hard time taking an area that was going to bring us commercial. And giving it just residential, but you're getting far more than any residential development in the city. I'm having a hard time with that, but if there's some muddle room between that density, um, in exchange for the CO zone, I'm open to discuss it.
Okay, I, I mean, that's something we need to run the numbers, but I'm not, I'm not necessarily opposed to that.
I like that Haley, I think that's the way to approach it. Well, I don't know what feedback to give you. I mean, I'm still trying to figure out the pros and cons and all the other stuff. I, I struggle with all of the high density housing being low cost housing. Um, I mean, we hear that all over the place and we put it in and suddenly we. Don't qualify as having low cost housing because South Weaver's expensive. So, I mean, I, that's just a side note, I kind of struggle with, you know. Yeah, it'd be great for our children and other, you know, South Weaver residents to be able to move into, but. I'm just not sure it's going to be in that price range, um, but that's a separate issue, that's completely unrelated. Um. I, I have similar concern about, you know. Being commercial and I agree with Haley, if, if it's not going to be commercial, I don't, I think it. Muddies the waters to have it a zone that is something different. Um. So I think that needs to be cleared up one way or the other. Um, but. I, I think I'm open to discussion of, of redesign there. Um, back to the minimum number, I do remember when we, um. Approved the last one, that was kind of the minimum number, and so it seems like the minimum number's gone down. Is the minimum number going to go down again? I mean, obviously it's not at this point, but something made it go down.
Well, I think, I think townhomes are, are, uh, in our estimation a little bit more, you know.
Easier, so.
I think so, yeah.
And that's, that's all I can share at this point. I, I would want to see a lot more details about it, but I'm open to discussion.
Thanks.
I do just want to give you some feedback on the private road since we did just revisit that within the last few months. Um. Specifically for the R seven was that, gosh, I'm hoping you guys can make me, help me remember for sure, but. Was that this is going to be an area with lots of people? We do have a couple of areas in the city that do not have sidewalks and it's unfortunate for kids, people who have kids there. Where this is a townhome, you're probably going to get more younger families potentially. Um, sidewalks were important. It wasn't, and, and the amount, the, the width of the road was important to us because we, we had to consider this for a larger development.
Yeah.
In the city, um.
Let's see what we can come up with, I think, I mean, whether there's a will or there's a way, so.
Okay, but I think for me again, the fifty-foot right of way, making that fit somehow, that is pretty important to me.
Well, I'll tell you, um, I'm more than willing to talk about it. Um, I'm just going from the citizens that I heard screaming during all of this. Um, about, uh, what they wanted and what they were looking for and what they were upset was happening. Um, and I believe right now that, uh, going down from sixty-four to forty-three is a big win for them. I think that's something that they will like. Um, we will obviously have to do, uh, some, uh, public comment and public outreach, I would recommend. Uh, not just a public comment, but, um, I think it's something that we ought to find out. Uh, sidewalks is something that's big to me and there's a number of reasons for it and that Haley brought it up, which is the, the safety. For the people that are going to be living there and. If, if it's just, if, if nothing else, if we're seeing the number go down. Um, the size, the, the look and feel of it, like you were saying, the big retaining wall, I remember them talking about. How suddenly people's backyard was going to be a giant wall and they were going to lose everything, so. Um, I think overall it's good and I would like to see what you guys can bring back on it. So for that, I'm definitely willing to talk about it. Um, I am, I, I'm like Blair, um, when you take away commercial, it, it kills me. Um, and I wish that there was something, I mean, that would be a slam dunk for me. It'd be no problem. If you guys are lowering the density and still giving some type of viable. Uh, that'd be fantastic. I just don't know how at this point. Um, but. Uh, I will definitely hear whenever you guys bring.
Thank you.
And maybe it'll be one or two different options.
All right, okay, sounds good.
I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item, consent agenda, approving of the September thirteenth minutes, September check register and August. Budget actual, looking for a motion to approve this consent agenda.
Mayor, I'll move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion in the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next item, resolution twenty-two dash forty-six, freedom landing phase one and two, final acceptance. Apparently everything's been approved and passed off and. Everything's good, Brandon?
Yes.
They say three phases for freedom landing?
They do.
Is that three, total three?
A total of three.
Are they, how far are they into the tree, you know?
Um, you should probably see three in the next few months, I think.
They're just about finished with it.
Yeah, they just got to finish a few punchless things.
Any other concern? Not, we look for a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve resolution twenty-two dash forty-six, freedom landing phases one and two, final acceptance.
Hey, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we'll have a little call, both starting with Councilman Bill.
Aye.
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 Hey, motion carries. Next item, new business. Anyone have any new business that they would like to discuss?
I do. I just, I have a question for staff regarding. Uh, the. Robert Edwards property across street. Um, I believe it's twenty-third, is his date to finish the demolition and the upgrades to the property. I know I saw some movement over there today, it's looking kind of tight. Is he feeling like he's going to finish that?
Every communication that we've received from him, he, he thinks he's going to hit that deadline. We, we also are, are concerned. Kim has been in conversation with him multiple times, um, throughout the last few weeks. Um, one major concern right now is just his debris is flying off the property and so we've, uh, we've sent him a. Free notice of that if he doesn't fix it. Um, I mean, we would hate to revoke the permit, but at this point to, to slow him down, right? But the, that, that, he's got to control the debris coming off of the property and that's, that's a major concern for us. So, um.
So if the twenty-third happens and he's not quite finished, what the, the demo permit is revoked?
The demo permit isn't revoked. Um, what happens is the, the, the rezone is revoked.
Okay.
And so, um.
But the demo.
Continue to keep working on the site, but in order to start to pull any building permits, you would have to come back in and do a rezone with us.
Um, so just a question on the demolition. I know when he was doing the first building, we kind of realized that. We didn't have a date that, that he had to complete it by. I know that we made a motion that he had to complete it by or that reverted for the zoning. But does he have a date to complete it by as far as code enforcement goes, where he's not, where we can start assessing fines if needed?
Um, yes, we gave him, we, we definitely shortened the timeframe from a hundred and eighty days. I would have to look at the permit to see exactly when that was. If I remember right, Kim did say that she had put the expiration date within. That, that timeframe before October twenty-fourth, but I'll have to confirm that for sure.
So if it doesn't finish, then we revert back to commercial on the property and we can start assessing him daily fines with code enforcement?
Oh, yes, if.
If it's.
Give him the notice, right, that you have ten days to cure it. If he doesn't cure that, that junk off of the property or if he doesn't come in, because he does have the ability to reapply for his. Demolition permit, he comes in and re- reapplies for that, then that would stay the, the cure period, right? So we would work with him on that, but if he doesn't, if he doesn't reapply, that permit is expired, then we would start assessing those fees after the ten day cure period. For the property.
And I know we were talking about code enforcement, we wanted to, um. The ten day cure period would actually be the first citation.
Yes, so, so we will send a notice of violation, saying you have ten days to clean up your site or complete whatever, whatever item it is. Um, and then after that ten day, then, then the clock starts ticking, ticking on the per day.
Okay.
Fine, so after the ten days, it'd be a hundred dollars, two hundred dollars, so on, as they, they continue. Or we can assess a, a larger fine up to a thousand dollars, depending on the severity of that.
Okay, thank you.
Can I add a wrinkle?
Jamie?
I just want to set expectations on it that. The state law and case law and the code enforcement ordinance would require. The opportunity to cure within that ten day period. And there are two ways he could cure. Trevor mentioned one, which was remove the debris, but the other would be. Renew the permit and then continue with the demolition work. And then there's one other wrinkle, which is, yeah, sorry, you mentioned it, but not as something that would be in the notice.
You're correct.
And then the other wrinkle would be that the city might have the opportunity to go in and abate the nuisance in lieu of. Continually assessing a fine if it's a nuisance type violation.
We have the opportunity, but we aren't required to, is that correct?
Correct, and if you did it, you can assess the cost to him.
Thank you. That wasn't a terribly bad wrinkle.
In conversation with him today with Kim, uh, she. He commented to her that, uh. He felt like by next Thursday, which is, I believe, the nineteenth, he would have that all. Levelled and cleaned up. Done, so.
Thank you.
So anyway, that's what he told her today, so. Hey, any other new business?
Um, the only thing that I have is, um, still not seeing the police presence, um, down some of the streets. Um, I know four seventy-five is good very well and that is a great start to the program. Um, I think it's been a month since they were here now. Um, and, uh, just. Uh, would like to. Um, remind or reemphasize that we need speeding, uh, monitoring going on in the neighborhoods. And not just down on, um. Uh, South River Drive, and I just don't know who to, uh, notify on that. I don't know if that's a committee thing or. Call Davis County themselves or what, so.
I can be in touch with Lieutenant Cox on that.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, and since they did nineteen in the last quarter. Um, I mean, uh, we're talking, you know, six, seven a month. And I know on nineteen hundred you can do that in a day, so that's why I'm just really pushing that. That was the only thing, okay.
I have an item, but it's not necessarily new business. I'd like a report from a committee.
Okay, we're going to do committee reports right now.
She's demanding, she's demanding a report.
I want you and Haley to report.
Sure.
On, um, I had a resident ask about signs.
It was a discussion that we're going to have. You're talking speed signs, crossing signs.
Any type of public safety sign.
We will discuss that when we get to my committee report.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Hey, let's do our reports. Uh, Joel, if you'd like to begin.
Yeah, um, Parks Committee, um, uh, we're in the process now of creating a five-year strategy. Of, uh, how we are going to, uh, improve the parks. Um, we've got some good work that happened, uh, previously about the priority list and what needs to go on. Uh, we've been taking the Parks Tour along with our, um, uh, mayor and the. Public Works Department, uh, so we're making a list of everything that needs to be done, everything that needs to be maintained, some of the. Uh, things that have been skipped, but then we're also starting to look at, um, whether something needs to be done for the park to improve it over the next. Five years, um, we've got the, the rap tax and a few other things that, you know, we've got set aside to do these. Now it's just, we need to make some smart decisions. Um, and that's been going very well. Uh, gone to a couple of parks that I've never even seen before. Um, technically, I always considered them to, uh, just be retaining bonds, but, um, I guess those are still considered. Um, and then we spent some time at the, um, city's, uh, historic cemetery, which was really, really interesting. That was actually the first time I had ever been there and to know what we've got there and to see that and. Um, yeah, some ideas of, of what eventually we could do with it, um, right now. Uh, it's, uh, it's kind of what it's doing right now, being a cemetery and that's fine for now, so. Um, but as we move forward, we are going to look at demographics, what we can do in the different parks for the neighborhoods around them. Um, and then we would like to have a, a public open house so that the public can come and give their input on what they see needs to, to be improved and what doesn't. So, um, we're about halfway through with that tour, I think, and, uh, we've got a couple of the big parks left, so.
Um. We need the PR committee. You want to send a doodle out for me, please, for new November? Uh, PR Matt, uh, the little overlapping YCC, is that okay? We have our Halloween event coming up. I'm taking Trevor's fire too. I'm taking everyone's fire. Um. Actually, I'm just going to pinball it right back to you because I don't know anything about it. Um, it's coming up on the twenty, the twenty-first, is that correct?
Yeah. I just looked at Shaila because I didn't want to take her fire either, so. No, yeah, it's October twenty-first, starts at six P M, um, at the Family Activity Center. We have, we'll have games, um, and arts, uh, arts kind of activity that they can do. Um, some old scary, not scary, it's old cartoons that were from like the nineteen thirties because they're public domain. And, uh, we can play them without paying anybody. And, uh, and some, uh, trick or treating, so we're, we're getting ready for that and we're pretty excited about it, so make sure you tell everybody about it. Um.
And this is in lieu of the mother and son.
Yeah, this is in lieu of the mother and sons. We've kind of just made it instead of a mothers and sons, but they welcome to everybody. We said, why don't we just say we're welcoming everybody and, and bring them all into the building, so we changed it to Halloween bash on the twenty-first.
The one thing we discussed in our PR committee was just the city event has been primarily done by the rec department, but as we grow and. And continue to try and expound, expand, hmm, expand, yeah, um. Is giving it more under Shaylee's lead, if I'm saying that, okay. Um, I just want to give them credit publicly, um, being able to put on this event and the YCC will be there to help. Um, but you guys gave us resources that will really, I think, be awesome for the community and. Got it organized and ready in like forty-eight hours flat, so. Bravo, I, I really appreciate that and I think it's going to be a great turnout for us.
Can I step in real quick on just the PR and the events? Um. Kudos to the council for making that a priority. In the strategic plan, we talked about. Doing more to create. doing more to create connections within the community. If you don't know, we already have a series of events that are almost every other month. Um, there's a couple of months in there that, that don't have an event. But the goal is to create more community connections through those events. And that emphasis really comes from the council saying, we want to, uh, have more opportunity to be together as a community and, and have interactions and, and build relationships and all of those things. And so, starting from that goal and that directive, those strategic initiatives, we're seeing some of that filter down into the day to day and enhance some of these city events. And you'll see, um, you know, with the quarterly newsletters and whatnot, we'll be able to really publish more long term. What is the vision for city events and the series of events that take place? And so as we, as we point to Trevor and Shaylee and what they're doing, um, you'll see that over the next few months as additional information comes out about next year's schedule of events and what that looks like. But, um, we've always had a Valentine's Day event. It just hasn't been as big as it could be and as broad with that goal of creating those connections. Halloween is the same. There's always been a fantastic Halloween event, but now we're broadening the base of who can attend and who can participate with that goal of community connection. So hopefully we'll see the fruits of that, uh, of that work, but it's starting to come together and it's really exciting.
And just to, to tag on that a little bit, I know Dave and I like to talk, so sorry. Um, I just want to emphasize that we, we are doing everything we can to do everything as thrifty as we can as well with our communication efforts. So I know things seem really fancy and they seem bright and shiny, but we are, we are thrifting as best we can to make sure that we, we can stretch to these dollar, um, that way. So I know that making these events seem bigger seems like overspending thousands of more dollars. Not, not the case. A lot of times we can get them donated or we get, you know, a hundred extra dollars to buy some supplies, but not, not anything extravagant. So.
Yeah, thank you for making that point because as we try to bring in more events, we want to make sure that, I mean, we are obviously being very discreet, responsible as well. So thank you for making that point. Quinn's gonna tell us that the dust is
Non-existent, alright? No, unfortunately, uh, after the secondary water ran off, the last two weeks have continued to increase in the amount. We need to get back with the gravel pits and remind them that they need to be utilizing their well water and mitigating what they need to do, but as I think I mentioned previously, they, uh, Stick of Parson indicated that a lot of their current work of moving material out for the West Highway, they hope to be done towards the end of November. So if that's true and they finish, then their amount of material movement should diminish and hopefully it will start to drop. And they can start closing off some of the areas on the, the west end that is exposed and loose. That's all I have.
I've noticed that, uh, they have started on that, uh, southwest corner. They've, uh, taken some of their mud materials, so they haul it and have dumped that over the edge, uh, of the hill and or their slope. And they've also, uh, down in the bottom, uh, in that same area. They're spreading a lot of that, uh, mud out. So we should be seeing the significant difference there. If they're covering it, I don't think they're gonna be hauling anymore out of there at this particular time and hopefully through the winter. I don't know.
We have a community event where we all make mud pies and like place them on the walls of the gravel pit. Yeah, I, I'm, I'm down. I'm, I'm down to get dirty and get that cleaned up.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just two small items to report. Um, as we're all aware, the YCC, our new, um, new YCC members were sworn in, um, last meeting. We've already had a, a great kickoff to our year and we will be having our retreat, which is a city sponsored retreat will be a month from today. So that will be exciting for our YCC. Um, and then my other update is for the Municipal Utilities Committee. We have received, um, let me back up so I don't say it wrong. Don't tell me. Our geotech.
Right there.
We received that and it went to the design phase. So we're waiting for design phase, but we are, um, expecting to have that back within a couple of weeks so we can meet and discuss that. So the geotech study allows us to know how much fill, if any, we need to bring in. And then that gives us a cost estimate. Site, so including parking lots.
Okay.
Structurally and the whole.
And it was a better geotech than we expected.
Yeah, the geotech was good news, which would help us save money.
It's because of all the dirt, the dust blowing down there, right?
Yeah, so we hope to receive a cost estimate here soon and then we can go to the next phase, yeah.
And that's all I have. Thank you.
Well, before we go on, I have a question, okay, for YCC. Um, every year y'all do a, um, uh, like a Christmas, uh, thing. I mean, last year was the lights and those things. I'm not sure what y'all have planned for this year.
He totally is.
Sorry, I'm southern. English isn't my mother tongue. Um, I was just wondering, um, your plans that you have for this year? Um, do you guys have them and are they solidified yet? And if not, uh, one thing I would love to suggest is a um, home decoration um, type of contest, um, and just, uh, something that they get to vote on who has the best decorated or most mentionable. Um, I would, since I don't think the city needs to be paying for that, I would be more than willing to actually uh, pay a, a hundred or a hundred fifty dollar prize, uh, for whoever has the best house to kind of pay for all of their stuff. I'm, you know me on Christmas.
It's coming right back to him because he's gonna know that he has the best.
So totally appreciate that. That is one of the items we're gonna discuss at our retreat is other goals that we want to do throughout the year. Um, the YCC has done a home, like decorating contest awards before, but it's just been more of a gold star.
Yeah.
So any type of prize is even better. So I appreciate that.
And, and that's what it would be. I'm not trying to put the work on you guys. I would do all of that and definitely make Dave do the rest. Um, but, uh, money wise, some type of prize, like I said, um, hey, I, I'm kind of a Christmas fan if you haven't noticed, so.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you. We'll, we'll be in touch.
Um, the, the Hill Air Force Base Restoration Advisory Board met, well, virtually still. Um, but last week, it was mainly on operable unit five, um, which is a newer.
That's one of four seventy-five, right?
No, operating unit five is actually newer and it doesn't really relate closely with the city, but it's right there. Does anybody know where the railroad yard was off of I fifteen? So that's now getting donated over to the city or beat it over to the city. That's sorry, the state. Because I fifteen is going to have an interchange there, but they have to remediate, um, a lot of the chemicals that have been there from the Army's rail yard over the years. And there, they found quite a bit. And so they're actually digging it out and hauling it off and doing things. But, um, but at the same time, they did just do a brief discussion on the, uh, uh, pythons, what she came and reported on, the new contamination for PFOS and P, and I don't, I'm not gonna tell you what they mean, but and, and PFAS is what the other one is. But, uh, but they're actually doing, no, I don't need the definition, Paul. Um, but they're actually doing an actual, uh, uh, new rod or a new, uh, what's the? Record of discovery for that individually, separate from the rest of the contamination. And so it will be determined how to, uh, abate that and what to do with it separately. And so that was the newest question?
They'll, they'll have, they'll have two R O Ds per OU?
No, so the, 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 the R O D will be just, just for that new air, airborne PFOS.
But they're not, but they would still be doing the previous one too, so they'll have.
Yeah, so they actually have the original rod, still the new contract. I mean, it goes on and on, but the new contract's a five year contract for that. And then it continues on until they determine it's no longer needed. But it'll be a whole different record of discovery to, to put things in place for just that specific contaminant. Which is mainly, which is mainly from your, uh, foam sprays, your fire retardants and all that kind of stuff.
Really?
P F O S and then P S O S, something like that. The P F A S? There you go. And that, that, there's a long name for that and I couldn't tell. I'm not as good as Wayne. I'm not on the mosquito abatement committee to learn new words. So y'all remember that next time.
No, tarphyllis and darphyllis. And the mean ones are out this year. Yeah, they are. They've been awful. I feel educated. Thanks, man.
And not to ignore Angie, we need a, uh, we need a dual meeting invite for the Public Safety Committee. We talked about this last time, but we need to determine what qualifies and where and why are we going to put signs? Since we've added signs to four seventy-five and to old.
And other speed deterrents.
And other speed deterrents, yeah, like speed bumps and things. Um, we've had people contact a couple of the council members wanting signs in locations and different things in locations. And I think we probably, so we don't go down Pandora's Box, get some kind of guideline set up. Yeah, we can have that conversation with the Public Safety Committee. Staff has, um, had some dialogue about creating a, a process and a form, an official request form. We, we have a document that's been drafted but not been used. And so that when somebody does say, I'd like, I'd like a children at play sign or, or a stop sign or whatever, that they can make those official requests and have, um, have a review process and a decision made. So that's a great thing for the public safety to take care of. Thank you.
That's all. Okay, I've got a couple of things. Uh, I attended a meeting out at, uh, Hill Air Force Base that invited the mayors from Weber County and Davis County to come out there. And they held it at the, uh, Aerospace Museum. How many of you have ever been to the Aerospace Museum? I'm embarrassed to say I've never been there and I was totally awestruck and that's a really fantastic museum. That's cool. You know, the meeting they had was clear in the back, clear to the east and I started walking and walking and just kept on going. I thought, where does this end?
Do you know they have Easter egg hunts there at the museum? Easter egg hunts on Easter?
That's a cool place. Anyway, they're adding on. They're, they're adding a twenty million dollar expansion onto that museum out there and, um, they, uh, a couple of things that they brought up, they says Hill Air Force Base is hiring. If anybody is looking for a job, we are hiring and hiring big. And so if you know of anyone, uh, send them that way. They says we need a lot of employees. And so bring them out. They says if they're, uh, if they're qualified, they says we'll train them. Uh, they're, they're looking for, uh, technicians for the, uh, F thirty-fives. They've got the contract at Hill Air Force Base to do all of the repair work on all F thirty-fives for all three uh, divisions, the Air Force, the Marines and the, and the, the Navy. So they're doing, they're going to be building on the east side, which will be right out our door. Uh, six hundred and fifty million dollar, uh, hangar expansion, uh, to households F thirty-fives and do the repair work. So, uh, but he says we need employees in every field, so it's just not for that area.
It's just on the website?
Uh, I don't know if it's on the website. Uh, but, uh, anyway, a lot of good things are happening out there. Uh, one other item, how many of you can remember back when you were in elementary school? And we had show and tell? How many of you liked show and tell? I've got a show and tell. Can I present it to you?
Sure.
Your meeting.
This is coming from Wasatch Integrated Landfill right up here on top of the hill. We, I had a meeting with them. One of their major. They're having problems with lithium batteries starting fires. They crush these and, uh, they never know when they're gonna produce enough heat to start a fire. They says that they, in the past, uh, they're, they've had probably four or five fires in a year. And they said they're having one a week up there now. And, uh,
Is that because the, the big rollers?
Rollers crush these batteries and then once they're crushed and the chemicals mixed together, they really create a lot of heat. And so they're asking to let the citizens know, do not throw these type of batteries away in your, uh, garbage can. They need to be turned in and recycled or, uh, find another way of disposing of them besides throwing them in the, uh, garbage can.
Do they take those up at their building?
They'll take them up there. If you, if you take them, yeah, they've got the area there just before you go through the, the waste station.
Do they ever use the bed bug ridden mattresses to put out the fires? Just two stones with one, wait, two birds of stone?
They don't bury those anymore, but they, they did have a large fire up there, uh, here a week or two ago, that Lake City had to respond to. And, uh, it took them a while to get that out, but they said it's really a problem. So see these types of batteries, please don't put them in your garbage cans.
Did you just take those out of your garbage can?
Would probably be good to put this on our Facebook page or
He's not gonna answer that.
Social media or whatever.
It's just Teddy on the side.
Yeah. Garbage can. Where's the bubble blower?
I think I did, didn't I?
No, I didn't know that.
I've been doing that for the entire life.
Why not?
Mayor, do you have a garbage can to show us the proper way to dispose of it?
Don't tie your garbage bag shut tight. They have to, they're recycling up there. And the problem is when they go across the conveyor belt and it's kind of a shaker belt that shakes and pulls everything apart. And then it's easier to read, to, you know, recycle parts that they can use. Anyway, they says that if you tie your bags too tight, they won't come apart. And then, yeah, then they've got people on the conveyor belt that have to tear them open. And the problem that they're having is, uh, and they, they, they wear, uh, stick proof gloves, but they're getting stuck with needles, no, a needle stick. And they said they'll still go through the glove. And, uh, so they're saying, don't tie them and then the garbage will separate better.
Is this garbage you were putting out in just our city can? They're recycling everything?
Yeah.
I didn't know that.
Yeah, they're recycling. I can't remember.
So why are they charging us for an extra recycling?
They're trying to extend the life of the landfill. And they need to do this recycling in order to get another, they're hoping fifteen years. But if you've been up there lately, they've opened that last sale. And, uh, from the time they've opened it, I was up there this past week, I was amazed at how much they've already filled that
Yeah.
up, but they say they've got fifteen years there, but, so they're recycling a lot of stuff, yeah. They recycle
So we can tie it, just not tight.
So you can tie it, just maybe one tie and throw it in, not a, not a, uh, double knot.
It's like putting on shoes and not tying your laces, but that's.
I live downwind from.
Thank you, Brandon, for the vision.
So the wind doesn't spread it.
So that's what they're.
Of not to do it.
Well, they, they sort of do, but they say there's a lot. If you tie them tight, there's, you know, the crumb, you know, bags are pretty strong.
And slow them a night.
And, uh, so that's what they're. And uh, so that's what they're, that they're after there. They cut back, they, they were running two shifts out there, and now they're only running one shift out there. Uh, which uh, they're able to, to keep up and it's uh, reduced your costs a little bit as well, so. Uh. Staff, Dave, you got anything?
I have nothing to report.
Okay, then.
Oh, wait, I should do one, I thought that you might do this, Mayor, but
Oh, maybe I was going to.
Yeah, uh, the digital sign, question of the timing of the digital sign, so the, the guts of the sign were removed. Um, Public Works will be there um, within the next two days to take down the columns. And then um, Yescos should be back out probably next week to have that restored, but shifted over. So it's down right now, but it will be back up in its new location probably by the end of next week.
Okay, then at this time, we're going to go into a closed session meeting, so uh.
Mayor, make a motion, we go to a closed session, second.
Take an all in favor, say aye.
Aye.